Father God in heaven, we come before you in the mighty name of Jesus, thanking you for everything that you are doing and thank you for everything that you've done for us already. God, help us to see the plan that you have for the city of Monavista. God, we thank you for your amazing love towards us, God, and towards the valley. God, we ask that your perfect will be done here in the city, God, as well as in the valley, Lord. Help us to not fall short, God. God, help us to be sensitive to your voice. Help us to adhere, God, to stay the course. God, give us direction and give us wisdom. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Nita, would you roll call, please?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Present.
Counselor Segala?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Up here.
Mayor Becker?
Present.
Form is declared.
Okay, notifications to the agenda, so approval consent agenda minutes of regular meeting, January 7th, 2021. Review and approval of accounts payable.
Sound moved?
Second.
They moved in second to accept approval of consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting, January 7th, 2021. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, proclamations, communication appointments, Rio Grande County Library District. I'm going to Barbara Hearsink to the library board.
Good evening, counsel. A letter was sent by the Rio Grande County Library District. Dear council members, on December 8th, 2020, the Board of Rio Grande County Library District has voted to recommend the appointment of Barbara Hearsink to the Rio Grande County Library Board. Your term will expire on December 31st, 2026. As stated by bylaws, Article 5, Section 1, replacements of the Rio Grande County Library Board of Trustees shall be appointed by the recommendation of the Library Board of Trustees and shall be ratified by two-thirds majority of each of the following legislative bodies: the Board of Trustees of the Towne de Norte, the City Council of the City of Monavista, and the Board of County Commissioners of Rio Grande County.
Does that move to approve that correct?
Correct. And if you do have any questions, the Attorney General Library Board, Margot Alexander is here and she's part of the Library Board.
Margot, did you have anything you wanted to add to that, or were you just...
Familiar with the Hearsink, but not familiar with...
That's the wife, I understand, of the eye doctor.
Okay.
And the council, the council approved her. So, you know, it's okay with everybody, it's just that you all have to approve it also. And Kim Armstrong is the gentleman who is leading my work, as I understand.
I would move Barbara Hearsink to the library board.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to appoint Mr. Hearsink to the library board. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Barbara Hearsink for the library board.
Okay, both of us for the new code enforcement officer.
But we're going to do this officially.
Okay.
I amend the merger.
I amend the Lopez.
I amend the Lopez.
Do you solemnly swear affirmative penalty of perjury?
Do you solemnly swear under the...
Or affirmative...
Or affirm under the penalty of perjury.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Support the Constitution of the United States.
The state of Colorado.
State of Colorado.
The city of Monavista.
City of Monavista.
And I will faithfully perform the duties
And I will faithfully perform the duties.
of code enforcement officer. Which I have known from you.
Which I have known from you.
And upon which I'm about to enter.
And upon which I'm about to enter.
So, congratulations.
Is there anybody you want to introduce?
No, my son and my daughter. Look forward to serving you guys and doing a good job of attitude.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, citizen comments, special presentation. Scheduled appearances in order to be included in this portion of the agenda, please. We got to file the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk in the later end of the year. Monday at 8:00 PM. Want to visit the high school after prom committee requesting funds for prom? You have kids in school?
I do not.
She's a chef.
Thank you, counsel. So, the letter was sent by the after-prom committee. I don't know if you can read it into record, or if you all have received it, if you want to vote on it. Their donations requests are fifty, seventy-five hundred, one hundred twenty-five, one hundred fifty-two hundred, or other. And it is to support the kids to have an after-prom party, so the kids aren't out drinking and drinking and doing anything that they shouldn't be doing. What were the increments again? Fifty, seventy-five hundred, twenty-hundred, twenty-five hundred, fifty-two hundred, or other.
You may not know the answer, but how it's... Well, of course, we don't know what restrictions are going to be at that point in time either, so we don't know how you have a prom.
Yeah, I honestly could not answer that for you, I'm sorry.
Yeah, don't worry. Jenny, do you remember what we did last year for them?
I was just pulling that up. Give me just one second. My computer will work.
From my experience, it's pretty effective, appropriate.
I believe it was five hundred, is what you did.
Was that a motion, or was that...
No. Discussion, yes.
Jenny has a question. How much was the council fund? Did we go through all of our fund last year?
No. You had three thousand dollars left at the end of 2020.
Let's do at least the five hundred again, what do you think?
Oh, I'd move to do that, first five hundred dollars, yeah. Absolutely.
One second. Motion to approve five hundred dollars for the after-prom in a second. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve five hundred dollars to be donated to the Monavista After-Prom Committee.
Just wanted to make a comment on that right there real quick. If anybody has any, has ever lost a child or a friend of your child, you know, five hundred bucks is not a lot to spend on these kids, you know, to give them the opportunity of a lifetime. So, I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, One-Sent Committee members. We have three in here. Three applications, are you done this, Jenny?
Yeah, there's three of them. I'll get up there so I know my... Good evening, counsel. We put out a request for interest in the One-Sent Committee a couple of months ago. If you'll recall, we had two vacant positions. Through that request, we only received one letter of interest with this new request. So, in your packets tonight, we included a couple of letters from last year. One from Jose Zamora and one from Stephen Valdez, in hopes that they might still be interested in serving on this committee. So, basically, what I'm looking for this evening, if counsel's okay with it, is, you know, I would like to have the appointment of two people, so that we can have, if you'll remember at the last One-Sent Committee meeting we had at the end of 2020, they kind of wanted to meet at the end of February, first part of March, to see how the year closed out and kind of have an opportunity to talk about the direction that we want to go in the future, a little bit more than what we have. So, in the interest of being able to move forward with that, we would recommend that we get two appointed if possible, and I would be more than willing to reach out to the two individuals that had letters of interest from last year and see if they're still interested in serving. If the council wanted to appoint one of those, or whoever wanted to appoint.
So, we really only have one that's current application?
Correct, we only have the one from Mr. Dennis Han. That was the one that came in this year for 2021. And then the other two letters were for last year. We had multiple applicants last year, if you'll remember. So, there was quite a few to pick from, but this year we haven't received as much interest in it.
So, you'll be reaching out to the other two?
If there's one that counsel would prefer I reach out to, I would be happy to do that. Or if you want me to reach out to both of them, I would be happy to do that as well. If you want to appoint one of them, and if we need to go from there. Whatever is the pleasure of the counsel.
I would think that appointing the one that's current would be good, and then reaching out to the others, if anybody else has any ideas about that. If you reach out to the others and if there is interest, it could be pretty simple, it could be just one, or maybe none, I don't know.
Well, I'm the one who put the letter of interest in Mr. Han. I agree that he showed his interest, and I know they... I haven't heard here a year, two years?
Twenty nineteen, what the letter says.
So, and then Mr. Zamora, because I believe the other one, I'm not positive, but I thought I seen where he had... He's not like in Monavista. So, that would be my opinion, but I'm being a thought.
I agree with asking Mr. Zamora.
Do we need to, I know that there's districts and at-larges on the One-Sent Committee, do we need to take that into the consideration of the appointments?
So, we, as staff members already, took that into consideration when we put the request for interest out there. We put which districts we were seeking from, and like I said, we've only received one applicant back. So, you know, we can definitely put it out there again and try to, you know, bolster it again. We've put it out there several times. And like I said, in the interest of, you know, being able to move forward as a cohesive group for 2021. I mean, it's totally what you're going to explain.
Yeah, no, I got that, I'm just trying to... That, the first one, I don't think's an issue. I was just trying to see, because the other two, the three that we had in our packet, here are from different districts, and I didn't know if we were trying to fill a vacancy in the district.
We definitely would like to try to do that, so that the entire town is represented from each district. Again, but it goes back to interest in it, you know, and do you want to push for one specific district and leave a seat vacant until you can get somebody appointed from that district? Or do you want to fill the seats and, you know, really try to work in 2021 of bolstering this group and community?
Well, it's currently vacant, in terms of districts and seats.
Do you happen to know that, Nita? I'm sorry, what was the question?
What are the current, what districts on the One-Sent Committee are currently vacant?
I believe it was District 5 that's vacant.
Okay.
So, I think there was one at-large position that was vacant, and then, like she said, the District 5. So, the one, you know, it really doesn't matter what district they come from. So, and both of these letters of interest are from District 5, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, basically, we would be putting two in if we move forward with this, and one would be in that large. My personal opinion is that I'd like to go ahead and do that, because I think that, I think that we generate more community interest when we actually get moving on things, instead of waiting to have everything in a perfect order. So, if we have to have one of them be at-large, I'm okay with that. I'm actually better with that than I am waiting. Community gets, I think, we all know the government doesn't move fast, but, and there's not a lot we can do about that all the time. But sometimes we can, and this is one of those times that we can. So, I would like to show some movement.
Can I make a motion to that?
Um, let's see, hold up a minute. Yes, I would like to, I move that we appoint
Mr. Dennis Han.
For District 5.
That would be the at-large.
Okay, for that, the at-large. So, we appoint Mr. Han for at-large, and then see if Mr. Zamora is still interested in District 5, yes.
It's been moved in seconded to appoint Dennis Han at large on One-Sent Committee, and Mr. Zamora, if he is still interested for District 5. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to add appointments, Mr. Han and Mr. Zamora to the One-Sent Committee.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Ron Douglas purchased the Monavista Publishing Building. Forrest, is that yours?
Sure, why not?
Well?
Evening, counselor, Mr. Mayor. So, in your packet, you have a copy of the contract that was signed by the city. With Ron Douglas, back of the week, he can have a twelve from the city, where he had an option to purchase the old Valley Publishing Building. And you also have a letter from Mr. Douglas, saying that he wanted to exercise the option. Realizes the letter's a little old, he has reaffirmed that. You know, the time where he said he wanted to exercise that, asked him if he was in a hurry. He said he wasn't. We had a few other things on the burner, but it seems like it's becoming more pressing matter. So, based upon the procedure that was established in writings by the Monavista City Attorney, in order for that to take place, the city council needs to schedule a public hearing in order to actually have a discussion and/or vote on exercising an option. The option is contractual. And I'm not the city attorney, so I can't tell you what all your options would be at a public hearing, but you are required in order to consider this legally written request for the purchase of the building. So, basically, tonight, while Mr. Douglas is in here requesting that, he exercises that option, so we need to set a public hearing forthwith to consider that matter. And hopefully, the city attorney will look back for that and can handle that.
So, we need to give that some time, correct? So, probably not the next meeting, but the following meeting, so.
Probably would be the second meeting in February. So, we can properly notice it and whatever.
Just a question, has he indicated any, is there any indication of his plans to build at all?
Um, well, basically, saying one exercise the option so we can fix it up. But I think that's a question best posed to him. So, it would be pretty much like you were saying at this point, so.
Yeah.
That would be a good topic for a public hearing.
There are only two things to do, is rebuild or tear it down.
Right, that is true.
It's my understanding, he's already been making some improvements to it.
Is it? Okay. Just curious, okay.
So, I would ask counsel if you want to make a motion to a public hearing on that date, so we can notify him of the public. Such your pleasure.
What's that date?
February 18th.
Yeah, so are you motioning to have a public hearing on February 18th?
Just a note, there's already a public hearing for 9:02 on the 18th. I don't know if we want to put both of them in the same meeting or not.
Was it the public hearing, Kesar, for what?
Uh, it was either 7:02 or 9:02, the ordinance, 9:02, 7:02 is the change of... Was removing the special review use on religious institutions. That got postponed to February 18th, so it could be had for a meeting. I was just suggesting, I was asking whether or not we want to do both of them the same day, is what the question is.
Well, Kesar, I'm pretty sure that staff wants to withdraw that at this time. And we'll give you a formal notice of that, so it will occur that evening.
Okay, thank you.
So, yeah, sorry, forgot about that date, but, yeah. So, that's going to request that we don't have that public hearing. You know, rather than, we'll start about tonight, or the beginning or Sunday in general, whether that's part of it or not, but we're pretty much going to withdraw that and move on. Thank you.
So, I make a motion that we have a public hearing for the purchase of the Adams Street property to Mr. Douglas on February 18th.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded that we have a public hearing for the Valley Publishing Building to purchase, sell?
Potential sale thereof.
Potential sale thereof of the Valley Publishing Building. Is there any more discussion? Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segala?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to hold a public hearing for the sale of the Valley Publishing Building to Ron Douglas on February 18th, 2021, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question, just a little, but it's whatever, just came up, so I'm a little surprised. I don't know the reasoning or thinking behind dropping that other hearing.
Well, the reason is there was a lot of convoluted things that went on, counselor, so essentially, we feel like we'd be better represented in the city not to reconsider that at this time.
So, it just stands the way it is right now without altering?
Right, there's no changes to the existing code. So, it kind of goes in some way and doesn't really exist since this one. Less counsel objects.
But the ordinance exists.
The existing code changes, like what's changed. It wants to be code of law.
Okay, just, that's all I'm trying to clear up.
Right, so there will be no changes, that potential modification just goes away.
That's what goes away, I was hearing just the hearing.
No, the code, the code works, stays just like it is.
No, I'm sorry, that's all I'm trying to say.
Monavista Chamber Tourism, Request Wadding Tax Distribution. Ken, be sure and sign in, I'm busy later. Thank you, sir. We can do the first slide. There we go. So, first of all, thank you, counselors, mayor, and Mr. Forrest, excuse me, to allow us to present again the marketing plan for the city of Monavista's tourism. We did, as you know, present prior, had a prior presentation, and we were asked to come up with some more detail and come up with some more, a little bit more of a plan. I would say at this point that that was a great idea to go in and come back another day, because we have worked diligently and very hard as a committee and a group to put together, I hope, a pretty solid plan on marketing tourism for Monavista specifically. So, it was a good idea. You have the presentation on your computers, the full presentation, but we're going to abbreviate it, otherwise we'll be here till tomorrow. So, I don't want to do that either, but anyway. I will mention that the entire presentation is like a living document, like in marketing plan. It will change as we go along, additions will happen, deletions will happen, new exciting things will happen, et cetera, so forth, so it is a living document. It's not a in stone kind of presentation, so just mention that. If you see our lovely coast looks, isn't that great? It's a beautiful shot. That was by Kenneth Michaels, by English. Mont, then next, please. If you... I like this, we picked it out because it sounded like Monavista and tourism in Monavista, and what we need to do. Come dance with the west winds and touch on the mountain tops. Sail over the canyons and up to the stars. Reach out for the heavens and hope for the future and all that we can be, not what we are. And a very famous person, John Denver, you guys, you know him? He used to live here in Colorado. Anyways, it seemed very out of pop, so we included that in our presentation. Our goals strategically... Oh, you got the whole thing.
I got a little bit.
Anyways, our goals, our strategic goals are absolutely to increase tourism traffic in Monavista, and Monavista specifically. But understand that there is more things to do in the valley than just Monavista. So, the entire plan will include many things from the entire valley. The point being that Monavista will be the center. Monavista will be the heart, Monavista. And you will go from here in Monavista to anywhere in the valley and enjoy your vacation. Strategic goals, or tactical goals, we have a whole plan together as far as using digital, marketing, social media, emails, conventional methods of communication, press releases, et cetera, so forth, and we'll talk about that in a little bit. We do have our target markets. We're looking at targeting a market of the age limit of 20 to 40 ages. While statistics show that we do have a target market, I mean, we have a market of tourism now a little older than that, we think that with our approach through social media and website and that, that we would be able to target a little younger demographic. So, and you'll see that here as we move forward. Tactical goals, of course, include a website concentrating on social engine...
Social engine optimization.
Engine optimization. Increasing the number of road trips from Monavista, which you know, we've already started that with the Colorado Tourism Office posting some trips from Monavista. posting some trips, um, from Monavista out into some other, uh, locations on, on day trips. Providing exciting options to capture a higher percentage of drive traffic, increasing the event awareness, facility attendance growth, um, uh, keeping with the, the current health guidelines, of course. Assisting in positioning Monavista as a convention location, utilizing the New Sky High Facility and the establishment of an email base for, for marketing. So quite, quite a few different things we plan on focusing. So you ask, why are we doing this? You know, well, the number one thing we believe is that the number one thing you hear in town is if only we could. And could what is what I'm saying? Well, could, could we find a way to stop the traffic on the way through Monavista? Could we get more tourists? And could we fill the vacant buildings downtown? Well, I've heard a lot of talk, not a whole lot of do. So we put this plan together because we're the do. All right, anyways, there is some residual effects, I guess you want to say, to, um, to tourism. And if you look at, oh, we're way behind. That's okay, I'll just keep going. You can, you can scroll through if you'd like, but we, we had a shortened presentation, but I guess it didn't come through, for her to load up, for me to load up, so, so you can see the whole thing on here. But if you think about it, more tourism brings more revenue to town, more jobs, a healthier Monavista, a happier community. You, you bring more tourists, more jobs, more revenue, we fill those places with things for tourists to, uh, to stop and see, et cetera, so forth. So, you know, I, we believe that tourism is, is hugely important, um, for the future of Monavista. If you, uh, if, and in, in your presentation, you'll see Colorado trends. The, right now, between, um, uh, the travel for into Colorado, into Colorado as a whole, generates about twenty-four point two billion dollars of revenue. It generated in the entire state a hundred and eighty-one thousand jobs and an estimated seven point four billion dollars, um, in earnings and one point four billion dollars in estate and sales tax. Now, this is, this is in overall Colorado, so that's a lot of money. You, it's, we should note that our statistics were taken from some, some different reports, the, the running report. The CTO, um, puts out a report on an annual basis, and so many of our statistics were taken from that. Mystic San Luis Valley, um, based in, in two thousand nineteen on the, uh, running travel impact is, uh, for the valley as a whole, forty-seven million dollars in travel. How much of that comes to Monavista is difficult to say, but we want more. Um, and that's spending during a period of two thousand ten, two thousand nineteen. Tourism creates jobs in the valley, two hundred and sixty tourism-related jobs, according to statistics, were created. As a result, um, about one point two million dollars in the valley, um, in so, in local taxes. So some good spendable, uh, money there for the city. Tourism did bring in about six million in local taxes in two thousand nineteen, um, which is a growth of a hundred percent over the, the other period. So we do see in the valley tourism increasing. So what our proposal, of course, is to target more of that market and bring more of those people in, so we can grow that total amount. On the visitors' profile. Again, our target market is twenty-eight to forty, forty-nine, um, and also then the older market of forty-nine above. We believe that there is something for everybody in Monavista. We believe that Monavista can be the center and the heart of everything tourism in the valley. So you come here to Monavista, you stay here in Monavista, and from here, you go anywhere with that and, and enjoy your vacation. So, uh, that is kind of part of our, you know, part of our proposing. The Colorado Tourism has focused this past year, uh, because of the COVID. Mostly they, they targeted all their, their funds to visitors moving around in the state of Colorado. That's changed slightly in the last month or so, where they're putting out programs now to reach out, uh, into the other states for summer traffic. But right now, we're focused on attempting to get more traffic here throughout, from, throughout Colorado. And we're talking about Denver, Colorado Springs, Quinlan, uh, Front Range, you know, all, all the larger cities, uh, and bringing them down here with, showing them what we have to offer. And nice picture of the new bowling alley, by the way. I stopped by there the other day, I saw all the trucks out there, and I saw the lights on, and I had, I had to take a picture. So it's a, it's a, believe me, it's a great addition to Monavista. Side track it. So again, our target, our target market approach. We're obviously going to focus, uh, a little more on Colorado right now, but as we move, move out of that, we are going, we're going to get into digital marketing, uh, a website. We do have an exciting possibility that we'll talk about as far as the, uh, as far as the website. There is an existing website that has been offered to us, um, offered to the chamber, that has been around for quite a while. It, it has, the content is amazing and so amazing that it would take us years to build that same kind of website. And so it's, it's being offered to us to transition to Monavista-specific tourism. And, uh, and so we have, we have a plan for that as we move forward. A question was asked, how does a website market outside of Monavista? The base of our plan was drawn upon research from other successful cities in Colorado. Not only the Denver with CTO, but some of the other smaller cities around the area. And how did they accomplish their marketing plan? What was the number one point in their marketing plan? In every case, there was a strong internet presence with a tourism-based website at its core. In every case of these successful marketing plans in these cities. We have a strong, um, website presence, Rio Grande County already on, on that, but not Monavista-specific. Not targeting Monavista, so that's what we want to do. We simply want to follow the same successes as these other towns have done to position Monavista for tourism. The, and a, a, a great part of our presentation is that we call content is king. People now use all their social media, internet, Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, uh, websites, et cetera, so forth, to research the vacation. So our plan is to go out there and post interesting things seasonally, um, around Monavista and surrounding area. Stories, solicit stories from people that have traveled here. What did you do, what kind of fun things did you do, et cetera, so forth. Send us some pictures of how much fun you had and, and those kind of things, and post those so that the, everybody can see those. And so we, we call that content is king because, you know, people are looking at that. They're looking at, you know, all, all kinds of, um, uh, pictures and things and what's, what to do and where to go. And we, we plan on using a, a few different things, like we want, we would like to make some videos and post those out there because people will watch the videos and go, oh, look at that, you know, that's a great time in Monavista. You know, um, social media, public relations, um, press releases, um, for, for anything that's going on. We, we look at posting different events, if you, we have a list of events on the, uh, presentation. Our goal is to market all these events and get, you know, greater, uh, participation in these events from outside the, uh, um, not necessarily outside the valley, but definitely outside of Monavista. So we listed all the events. Again, if you look at your full presentation, the events are not complete. There are many more events that will probably be posted in there, um, as we go along. The, the plan in the, in the timeline is to, as those events start coming up, is to get the word out on our social media, our, you know, digital marketing, our Instagram, Twitter, et cetera, so forth, about these events, so that we can reach more people. The, we also put in the, in the program a list of things to do. Because as I mentioned earlier, it may be not enough to keep somebody here in Monavista for two or three days. You know, where there is, by the way, but, you know, if you look at that list. But, um, we produced a list of things to do around in the valley and all the way up from Creed and et cetera, so forth. We plan on including that in the marketing plan, so that when people come here, stay in Monavista, they can look at, oh, I can go here today, I can go there tomorrow, I can go there the next day and, and travel directly from, uh, from Monavista for their, you know, again, for their vacation, so. The things to do list, it, again, when you look at it, I'm sure that we missed something. You know, because, believe it or not, if you look at it, there are like hundreds of things to do in the valley. And, you know, people stand around and go, oh, what is there to do? You know, there's tons of stuff to do, you know? So we need to get the word out, you know, through this marketing plan, um, that we do have things to do in, in Monavista's surrounding areas. The last part of the presentation is, is the timeline. Again, this is a growing document. We have monthly things that we're going to be doing, monthly posts, monthly reports, et cetera, so forth. And then we have by the month, things that will be required as far as the events going on and, and, uh, if it comes into spring, a park to go to, if it comes into fall or, or winter, snowmobiling, whatever, whatever, you know, different seasonal kind of things. And that'll all be added to the timeline as we move forward, so that we stay on target with, um, keeping fresh, you know, to the public. So we come down to, let's talk about cost. There is an initial investment, and that initial investment is around five thousand, it is five thousand dollars for the existing website. It is seven hundred and fifty dollars a year for the basic maintenance, which is required for the first year or so, um, if we purchase this fully complete sixteen-year-old website. It will, in fact, put us light years ahead of where we are now and where we could be, before, if we had to create our own website and go from there. To start our social media marketing, um, right away, we're looking at about eighteen hundred dollars. This will allow us to establish and maintain the social media presence for about six months. To start our Google ad advertising, we will need about a thousand dollars to begin. It's our initial budget purchase price for about three to six months. As I mentioned, the marketing plan is a living document, and as we learn more, we will adjust our plan accordingly. In addition to, um, our intention to stay within guidelines of reporting processes and accountability required by the Rio Grande Tourism Board for the distribution of this money. So, that all said, um, it will take time, effort, expertise, dollars to accomplish this task. As I covered, the cost will be, will include the purchase of the rebranding of the existing website, monthly maintenance of the site, cost of related establishment, our local presence, setting up our email campaign framework, starting our Google display ads. So at this time, respectfully, Counselor, um, we are asking for your favor in allocating eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars of the Rio Grande Tourism money being held by the city, um, to the Monavista Chamber of Commerce Marketing Committee to begin the process of positioning Monavista as a tourism attraction. All Monavista-specific, Monavista-strong, Monavista-focused, and Monavista-at-heart. I would like to acknowledge, uh, Adam, of course, and his contribution to this. Chelsea and her contribution to this was on the committee. We have some other committee members that were not able to be here. Linda and Gary were on the committee and helped us very much put this together. At this time, I'd like to open the floor, if there are any questions, we have to answer.
Throw a thumb one at you, what's your keyword set on your SEO?
He's asking what's your keyword.
What were your key, what's your keyword set for your, on your search engine optimization?
I don't know, he's, he's the man.
Keyword set, we're, we're not that far into this yet. Okay, which we actually sat down the other day and met with the owner of the website. I was very impressed, uh, to be honest, as a website builder, that is one thing I do. Very impressed with Liz Lee's knowledge, understanding of the site. She is going to give us, uh, some free help too in the conversion over of this. Uh, as Ken said, this thing would take us light years ahead of where we are right now. What is that domain of the current one that you're taking over?
Are we at liberty to say it, woman?
I think at this point we can, we're liberty.
Go ahead.
It, it is, um, uh, the old U R G guide, that it was actually a creative publication, one point two, URGguide.com, but we won't keep that, we have already purchased the domain name, uh, under our cost. Uh, visitmonavista.com, we, we now, as the chamber own net, uh, and we'll be converting that over. Now we'll leave the other URLs in place, simply as routing. So people who have been going through the U R G guide for five or ten years, any links from other sites will still work. They'll simply end up at visitmonavista.com from this point forward. And as far as keywords and all that, that's, that's all we have to be exploring, Counselor. There's lots to do in the background to make this work right. But again, having said that, I'm met with a lady who owns the site, uh, very impressed with it and she knows how to move us forward in that particular direction.
You probably covered this, uh, but Ken said, uh, I don't know if I picked up on any specific ideas other than the general improvement of the town, uh, specific ideas for stopping traffic through, through town?
Well, I think it, the overall picture would be there's more things to do. And so, you know, as they, as they look before they get here on what's going on and what can be done and what can be done in the surrounding areas, you, you give them a stop.
So you use meta names and things like, uh, visitColorado, um, San Luis Valley, and a, all, all these different combinations, so that anytime someone went to Google and typed in San Luis Valley, your website's going to pop up in the top one or two.
Well, that's part of the search engine optimization.
Right, so that, that was.
Absolutely.
Yes. As people are traveling through, as, as we're learning, young children, hey, what's up ahead? They're on their phones looking to see, we want Monavista to pop up and one of the things that are here and available for them to do to pop up on these, you know, will be part of the marketing as we go along.
And again, on the full reports that we just scrolled through up here, there's so much more information on the direction we're going in. Some statistics where you can take a look at, um, you know, you can look at the demographics and age, age demographics and things that we looked at as we targeted, you know, what we wanted to target.
Yeah, my concern is just getting everything exposed and stirred up and people flooding into town and not any place to put their recreational vehicles. into town, and not having any place to put their recreational vehicle.
Oh, have I mentioned that before?
That's up to you, counselor.
There, there actually are a few places in Montevista that, that can have an RV parked in them, and maybe we should ask this committee to make that part of, you know, if you're coming through with an RV, turn here, here's where you can park. From there, you can walk anywhere you want to go. So that, that, that's reasonably easy to overcome.
Yeah, yeah, that's still something we need to accomplish traditionally, but that's, that's kinda, that's kinda on us, well, uh, but I would, uh, it's, yeah, part of your deal too, I'd just like to work with you on that.
Well, it's my understanding that Alamos is like a new RV parking, so they could park close.
Yeah, no thank you, no.
No thank you, I know, I, 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 we found that, we didn't hear it.
No, we didn't hear.
Well, you have, you know, a great hotel, take a stand.
Which one's that?
I think it's a very valid point that was brought up, uh, with, well, Council Johnson, Council Locke, is we need to stay in touch with the city on this, or if there are things that we can do in our marketing plan, or things we need to add, such as where to park, uh, you know, the development of an RV park, let's continue to work together on this. So, it's, all that information is current and up to date.
There is a slight definition difference there. The, uh, the park is a good idea, but parking is a lot simpler and a lot more accessible. They are two completely different things, so, just wanna make that, that clear. What is the balance that we have of the tourism money?
Eleven thousand five hundred.
And you're asking for eighty-five twenty, what was it, what was it?
They just told me that way.
I'm actually looking at the, uh, the Rio Grande County, uh, tourism, rivergrandcounty.com, and, and what it takes, and number one is advertisements should be placed, and, and this, this surprised me, because I always thought it was supposed to go outside the valley. Advertisements should be placed outside the Rio Grande County and are used as a tool to attract tourism to the area. They can include, we're not limited to magazines, newspaper, radio, television, web, and email-based media. So I think it's interesting that I've been under, under the understanding, and I think a lot of people have been under the, the understanding, that the lodging money was supposed to be used for advertising outside the valley. So that's the direction that you took, so you've actually overshot what Rio Grande County is asking for. Yay.
And, and that is possible, but that, the website and Twitter and Instagram and all that will, will be available to, you know, Canyon City and Alamos and Laura.
It'll be available to Kentucky, you know, you know.
So, yeah, so it's, it's still available to those local people to see what's going on.
Sure.
So where is this going? I was just about to make a motion, but I, it's not the chamber, or is it?
Yes, yes, we are a committee of the Chamber of Commerce.
He is the committee chair.
And it, and it, it will, it will go to the chamber and be distributed from there for the, for the items that we talked about.
I want to move to approve the request at eight thousand five twenty from our tourism funds available to the, uh, Montevista Chamber of Commerce.
The second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars from the Rio Grande County Tourism money to the Montevista Chamber. Is there any more discussion?
Just like to commend the committee for their work in putting together a very nice presentation. I'm glad to see some action moving. Everybody can pick apart and say they would like something done differently or better, but, you know, that's what happens. Everybody has their own critique and stuff like that, and this is a direction in this motion, and I commend your work.
In fact, I, I, I know that you had to summarize it, or we would have had to have packed a bunch of water, so, because we see it in our packet, but I really wish that the town could see what y'all have done. I would like to, for y'all to, uh, to just, I, I would just like to see if y'all can find a way to make that happen.
Counselor Locke, it is on the city of Montevista's website.
It is on the city of Montevista's website?
The whole thing?
The whole presentation?
The packet, the council packet is on the website.
Well, there we are.
You asked and it happened.
Ask and it happens. Yeah, I was not even there to ask it.
Like, oh, we might get some help doing it there, huh?
And, and, um, you know, looks like you have a promoting job to do, because you already have it on Montevista's website. Just saying. I'd get it out there.
Not, not that it ever asked for it.
It's very, it's very specific as to what it can be used for, so.
What, the marketing plan?
The marketing money.
The funds for the tourism.
Right.
Tourism funds. There are other organizations that could, um, use it in their promotions, um, you know, like Stampede does a lot of outside advertising, um, Dad Conference, those, all those dudes draw from outside, so it's possible, but they've never asked, no one's ever asked. You know, on the original intent, if I go back to the original intent, the majority's funds actually at one point were contracted to the chamber, about sixteen thousand, I can't remember exactly, it was like sixteen, two fifty or so, um, was originally, when, when the funds, very strange how the funds arrived in the city, but I'm not gonna, that 'll take an hour. But anyway, the city got them from McGowney, and, um, so the first discussion we had was with Chamber Commerce, and they had a pretty aggressive event marketing plan at the time, when, if anyone ever wants to see that, I've got the documents, um, and it was very, it wasn't as broad as this one, or really as, um, all-encomiums, it was a pretty narrow advertising type plan, but we were gonna fund it all, and that, and things just didn't quite work out, but that was, really, it was like sixteen something. Um, and then we were saving three thousand dollars to actually promote a couple of local events, but the kind of strategy they're working on now for events is what the city was thinking about at the time, so, uh, our big events kind of are self-promoting, like Dad Conference and Stampede, you know, um, but they could ask, there's still some funds left over after this, so.
Come on, man. I'm sorry, counselor.
To, to, just to add to that, I think that, well, maybe I should just let you mention this, but let me, let me ask, and to make sure I'm asking, I'm saying this right. What, what I saw tonight, and everybody knows that Adam and I are married, but I have not seen this before tonight, yes, so I just wanna make that clear. I have not seen this before Nita sent her packet out. Uh, I know that Adam and Ken have been spending all the time alone together, so I'm glad to see that something was produced from that. Sorry, sorry, you know, sorry to kinda, you know, that they haven't let me be a part of this, but, uh, as far as the events, uh, I go, this is part of the living, organic, um, way that this works, is that instead of Stampede having to, to advertise, and Ag Conference having to advertise, and Potato West having to advertise, and all the other things that we do, this advertises it all in one spot, and, and it boosts it every time there's something coming up. That's what they were talking about, search engine optimization, that, that Counselor Foster asked about.
And, Counselor, I'm sorry, but I, I would, I would definitely agree with that. Part of our plan, as you saw, we included all the events, you know?
Right.
So, part of our plan is exactly what, like, the chamber asked for money for those events to get the word out. Well, since we are a part of the chamber, we will be doing that now to get the word out for these, these events. Now, there are, of course, other, um, folks out there that will request some money. I will mention, you know, that I am on the Rio Grande Tourism Board, and we currently have this money for two thousand nineteen, actually. Two thousand twenty will probably not be distributed until, um, March sometime, um, but it's actually looking relatively good. So we will have additional funds available, um, for marketing, um, sometime in March or April. As, as of July last year, um, it's probably no secret, but we were about eighty-two hundred for Montevista. So that was July, half a year, you know, we could be some, somewhere close to fourteen, fifteen thousand for the, uh, for the year distribution. The, the state does not release those numbers until a quarter after the end of the year or something like that, so, uh, but, so there's more money coming, you know, but we want to start it.
I just want, Ken, I was with the Chamber of Commerce for a while, just before your time, but, uh, this is the most aggressive, professional, well-thought-out, uh, plan, uh, well, I've probably never seen anywhere, but certainly from the, uh, chamber, and I appreciate what the chamber's been doing. They've been stepping up, uh, last year, maybe a couple of years or so, and changing things and getting things done, and if this is where it's headed, then, uh, I'm, I'm all for it, so, keep up the good work.
Very good job. I had a discussion with a young man last night, and he said that he has visited with people in Rain Cruz a couple of times when he was there, and the couple have come back here several times, and he's like, why do you stay here? And they said, because we like Montevista. We go all over the valley, but we stay here because we like Montevista. And then, whether you did or not, there is a Gruber baby food commercial on, who just highlights the San Luis Valley.
Mm-hmm.
I just, I just heard about that the other day. That was, that was part of their pitch, was we, we, we read products from the San Luis Valley.
The baby food. But it's things like that we could put on our resume.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, connect it, so that people.
It's all part of the content. We want to solicit content for people who've been here, what have they experienced, and you just continue to build upon that, because that draws more people. It's much more believable than advertisers, who go, oh, is it this, is it this man, this fond, and they did that, and taxes other people. Condom is king, and that is the major direction we're gonna go with this. It's just solicit that for people who've been here, they've experienced it.
We have a motion and second on the floor for this. Nita?
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Mayor Fontem Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to grant eight thousand five hundred and twenty dollars to the Chamber Marketing Tourism Board.
Very well done, guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Counselors. Mayor, Forrest, thank you.
You know, we're expecting big themes, right?
I wanna thank you for all the work that you've done, Ken, you come home now.
The work actually just started.
It's just started.
We've got a lot more to do.
So this is the comments. So the council welcomes your unscheduled comments, please limit to the comments to three minutes. Counsel will not take action at this same rate. Margaret and Louie, Annie.
Greetings, everyone, city council mayor. I just would like to say thank you to the crew who did all the snow removal. We had a heck of a mess, and they really did, I mean, the streets are in good shape. Parking is a little near, but, but still, uh, thank you for you and your crew for doing, I think, an outstanding job, and, uh, that, I'm, I'm just happy to be here. Things are moving, and it's a good place to live, and people need to know how good the people are here. So, thank you, everyone, doing a good job.
Thank you, Margaret.
And I better not see you out there trying to move that snowbank again.
Yes, how are ya?
Be sure and sign that paper.
Aye, sir. Just been hearing some, uh, talk around the area about, uh, a neighbor of ours that's looking at doing something with their house. I think everybody here's kinda got a pretty good idea of what I'm talking about. Just kinda wanna hear what you guys have to say. What we're looking at, what we're looking at, how of addressing it, um, uh, how it's moving, progressing, degressing, what the case may be.
The source would be?
Yes, sir. Yeah, um, I'd be happy to address that. So, it's an interesting requirement, because our municipal code does not actually contemplate homeless shelters.
No.
Not a word, not a way, not a word, search doesn't exist in our municipal code, which is a problem, um, from a federal law standpoint. You can't exclude that housing type, but, so what's gonna actually have to happen here in that instance, is we're gonna have to take the planning commission and draft some regulations for the city council review on, um, where homeless shelters might be allowed. Traditionally, not in residential low density or R1 density that the rest of the world uses, um, not usually a compatible use. So, um, as the lady said, if that doesn't work there, she can find another place if we help provide it, so that's good. But essentially, it's not, it's not an allowed use currently in that zone or any zone of the city, so we will be taking the planning commission in February and start that discussion of, uh, the city clerk will do some research on other communities in the valley and other places, and what they allow, and how it's regulated, uh, because honestly, um, we don't have a, a way to say about it, a regulation, so we'll work on that, and it'll take a couple months to widen its way up to the city council, but currently not allowed use anywhere in the city.
Just curious, where did the mapping come from to show her address? Who printed that in the paper, put it on Newsmax, so on, so forth?
Haven't seen that.
You didn't see a picture in the paper that showed sixty-nine Pioneer Road?
Oh, yeah, so somebody took a picture of our map? I mean, the, the zone.
Just curious who may have done that, because what's not, what, what has happened is others that live on a corner of Pioneer have had people knocking on their door wanting to know if this is the homeless.
Right, I just heard that tonight, so, I don't know where the newspaper got their graphic from, so.
Not, not quite sure, but it, you know, the particular family's got young children in the house, and the father there's probably not as aggressive as me, so he probably isn't gonna do whatever or say whatever, but, uh, you know, it's just a little unsettling, because typically, this is something, you know, a homeless shelter, that's something you would take care of at the church or something of that.
Right, right.
Sort, not in a residential neighborhood, let alone a bowtie house sitting on the corner that was built with drug money from God knows who and how many people.
Well, uh, well, we won't address that part necessarily.
I don't know.
No, I mean, you're certainly, uh, but that map, um, I don't know if it had a star in it, then it would've come from MapQuest or Google.
Sure. Of course, she had to open her mouth and say her address, because, you know, she thinks it's got some symbolic number with it, you know, so that, that's a whole different thing with this person.
Right, right.
It hints where the cash funds possibly came from, or, you know, building out of code, encroaching on another property, where the snow slides off the roof, takes out the fence.
Right.
And of course she, oh, well, this was before you bought your place, but did you get warned about this? I say, yeah, well, I'll deal with it, because I don't need someone to hold my hand to deal with someone like her, but I definitely wanna point out who we're dealing with here, you know, and it's, it's a, it's an oddball person, nonetheless. But, uh, no, I just, you know, like I said, I heard a few things, seen a few things in the paper, and, uh, curious where this has happened, because no doubt, it's, uh, probably not the proper zoning, obviously.
It's unlikely that it is, and like I said, so we will have a process. It would be highly unusual as an R1 use, um, in some places, I guess, but not really Colorado. So, um, we will, we'll do the research on that, and we will definitely notice the public hearings, and you're all welcome to, even coming to the planning commission, we'll kinda let, um, we're in contact with, you know, Raina, fairly confident. Even come to the planning commission meetings. We'll kind of let, we're in contact with, you know, Raina fairly often. So I think you all know each other, right?
I would imagine we're acquainted.
Right, I didn't, you know, let's be a little facetious, but we'll make sure that word gets out and that you guys know about, like, even the planning commission meetings you come to. We love to have the public come to a planning commission meeting. It's, you know, kind of rare. And particularly when we're planning something and working on it, that'd be great to get some input.
I'm new back to town, but I'm not new to town.
Right, so.
I've spent a few years here.
Yeah, we'll be happy to let you know about it, and we'll get working on it. I mean, it's not a fast process. It'll take a couple of months.
That's okay.
Yeah.
As long as it's not a fast process jumping into it.
Yeah, yeah.
And opening doors.
No, I've been, and honestly.
That, that's more the concern than anything because we just have to be more proactive and reactive on it.
Right.
Come on ahead, just.
My guess is that it'll be, if, this would be my guess, in most places, a special review. So it's not probably a by right in most zones because there's occupancy issues, there's parking issues. One of the reasons it doesn't necessarily work in R1 is because of parking issues. So, but we'll get there. We'll keep you informed on it.
Perfect.
You're right.
On the sign and sheet, do you want my physical address? Or is that not necessary?
If I could get your physical address, I know it'd be great.
Oh, it's right next door.
We don't have the special number.
It's minus one or a half a person. Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Do you want to make comment?
Jeremiah.
An advertiser for the city. Chamber of Commerce this year, just so everybody knows, the Chamber of Commerce is doing the swoop of the cranes again this year. So it is, it is going very well at the moment. So I'll put that out there. There are still cranes available for sponsors. And we do have a list of artists' names out there. But again, this year, the streets of Montevista will be lined with cranes.
And what's the sponsorship on one?
One fifty for a sponsorship. The only difference this year from last year would be the, the sponsor or the artist, when they go buy it back at the end of the season, will be a hundred dollars versus fifty. And part of that came from the fact that the ones that we auctioned off, you know, the, the last ten that we auctioned off, went for like three hundred to five hundred dollars a piece. So it was amazing. And people from Texas wanted to buy them, and of course, Texas, you know. But anyways, if it is still available and you're going to see them on the streets again, and I don't know if it hits you up yet, but I'm not on the committee.
We already agree. We're already planning.
Good.
Saw the first two this morning. They look really nice.
And there is a volunteer down on Fridays, but the chamber was closed for the long Fridays. There is volunteer down on Fridays now, so if somebody wants to come in and take care of that, get the, get the crane, we can work that out.
You can go online, get the application for the one hundred and fifty dollar check. Thank you.
Sorry, don't need to run out, but.
Jeremiah was coming. You're involved now?
Oh, well, please, please.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, I got a crazy lady on the reach next door. I'm sorry, I say that out loud?
No, 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 no.
If that's the worst, can be said about me.
Resolution setting, resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one is a resolution setting meeting dates and place posting places for the meetings. Currently, our public posting place is the front door, which is stated in our charter. We would like to keep this that way. I also post that on Facebook, and the city website is also the agenda. So it's posted on social media as well as the front door, but according to our charter, the front door is the posting place for all notices. Dates and times of meetings, regular scheduled council meetings for the first Thursday each calendar month and the third Thursday each calendar month at six P M. This is a resolution that needs to be passed each year, so I would ask the council would move to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one.
I would move to pass the resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh one, setting the posting place for twenty twenty-one.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, seconded to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero one, setting the posting places for twenty twenty-one. Is there any more discussion?
Yeah, I got a question. Just curious, you know, this comes up every year. It's just kind of a routine. But is there been any consideration or any reason to think about someplace the other end of town or something? I mean, is, is that of any advantage to anybody?
So it's currently in our charter. So in order to do that, we would have to take it to the voters to change the charter.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's my question.
Thank you, Nita.
Nita, go ahead and call for the vote, please.
Counselor Foster?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Mayor Fontem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty-one. The resolution setting meeting dates for Montevista City Council and designated public place of posting.
You can go right on down to staff proposals, reports of actions. Well, that's good. Oh, yeah, that would be a problem. So I usually move PowerPoints, but. So maybe the councilors can hear.
So after receiving my annual reviews from the city council, I have some goals based upon those discussions. We can get your reviews and discussing them with the mayor, so. In a minute or so.
Sorry.
See, with the green screen, it'd be like an action video. I don't know. Y'all want to do that, we'd probably do that. Sure, I would do that. It would be in the trash. It would be in the trash.
Those are us people.
Purple potatoes are really tasty. Okay. Y'all know we are the largest city in Rio Grande County, despite the fact that we don't have the courthouse. We still manage to be the basic center, and I love part of the valley. I think that's great. Former strategic plan, you know, city achieves benefits to our community providing a base of faith, teamwork, innovation, transparency, service, and sustainability for the community. So some strategic plan stuff. Basically, after my discussion with the mayor, there was basically six goals that were set for me for twenty twenty-one. And they're basically designed to align with the community's visions, council's visions for the meeting. So kind of there was a couple of ongoing themes. One of those was increased work sessions and training opportunities. So some council members have asked for different things. Some of them are ongoing things. One of the ongoing topics that started with this council a number of years ago was annexation. And as you might recall, we tried to do that in annexation committee with citizens, and then that, as COVID showed up and didn't happen. So essentially, staff and committee and Nita, actually, recommend that the city council have a work session to discuss annexation. The first step of annexation is actually the creation of a three-month plan, which sounds really onerous, and it's not. State of Colorado accepts bubble max. It's pretty simple. There's some questions we can go through with the council. Basically, fill one out, get a follow-up. You cannot do an annexation without a three-month plan. And we haven't had one for a while. We haven't done an annexation for three, four years.
Three years.
Yeah, I think the last one was the B L M, which is great. Annexation was very busy, but anyway, we're looking at more expansionism kind of thing. So we would like to do that with the council, and I tentatively put that on a scheduled date for March ninth, twenty twenty-first. What else I think would be useful, yeah. I had somebody helping with graphics. He's not a terrible item. So another scheduling item would be, you know, a council and management retreat with both myself and the management team and the members of the city council. Don't have an exact date for that, but I was thinking sometime in April, maybe if COVID has been tamed somewhat, it'd actually do a nice kind of retreat session. And, you know, I've been involved with a lot of few of those over the years, and they can be very helpful for both like short-term strategic planning and just making sure we're all properly aligned with each other. We had a question from a couple of city council members to have a work session with Sursa. And lo and behold, suddenly Sursa sent out this magical email that said, Sam Light can be in your part of the state in this one particular week. I was like, wow, okay. So I responded to that, and so that work session is scheduled for Tuesday, May twenty-fifth at six P M. Sursa is the lead legal, or sorry, Sam Light's the lead, lead legal counsel for Sursa. It's been a long day. Also, we had an opportunity and request to talk to Kevin Bomber from C M L. I have someone from C M L. And most of you remember Kevin. He's an informative, interesting guy, and the C M L's put together kind of an educational series where they have, the first part is some video topics, and then he comes down and talks about those in the work session. And basically, we're looking at February ninth for the first of those, and the second would be on February twenty-third, and Kevin would be there in person. And those dates are actually in my memo. And so that was really good. Kevin's a very informative guy. For some of you who've been around longer, Sam Met, he'll fill that before. And I still talk to Sam a lot. He's a great guy, and Kevin is as well. And then, you know, other potential work sessions that the city can hold. And that's kind of up to you, because I know part of what you all said is that you would have, like, have opportunity to discuss more other topics in depth. So as I said in the memo, they have your packets. If you have other suggestions for work sessions, those kind of things, you know, let us know, and we will see if we can put together a topic and then let the council have an opportunity to pick some dates, discuss what you want to talk about. Okay, so interestingly, when I did this, I wasn't quite sure where the chamber was at on their marketing website and, well, not broader, sorry. Their marketing strategy, which I want to say I think is great, and as I think Counselor Johnson said, very comprehensive. So we appreciate that. You know, there's some council members talked about having a professional economic development person. What I'd like to do is create a work session with the council where I bring in an economic development professional, someone from the C C C M A, which is Colorado City County Managers Associations, or E D C C, who does this for a living. He can talk to you about, you know, advantages, pros, cons, disadvantages, give you an opportunity to ask questions and decide if you have an interest in that. Interestingly, I will tell you that since I wrote this part, I'm not really discussing it with anybody, but I think I mentioned it at your U R G B meeting, and so, gotta love acronyms. San Luis Valley Development Resource Group got some funding for localized economic development. And so gals are in that. Sarah right now said, you know, if you guys are interested in that, we might have some potential funding to help offset costs. And like, that's great. And Sarah Stover, she used to work on their enterprise and things, so I know her really well. She's a great gal, and I'm sure she would help us out if we went in that direction. Okay, communication. So I think, you know, I would like to have with the council members, if you're interested, once a month, individual meetings between myself and the councilors, and I did do that with previous council, mostly with the mayor. More of the other meetings were at POC, but, you know, I always find that interesting, and I learned a lot of things. And also kind of in that communication vein, work sessions, because we get a chance to talk about things. And I think if you all recall, you know, one of the recent, if you will, success stories was the turnaround of the golf course in our city. And that came because you all went in work sessions, and it went from something that seemed really, really difficult. I mean, this Kevin was saying, why can't we? Well, if you look at this last summer, in the middle of COVID, things happened, and things changed, and that was much of it due to the council's work in work sessions. You know, you had a pretty contentious work session with the group, and they took heat of it, and they, they, it was awesome. It was great. That was really a credit to the city council and also to the city staff, which you basically allowed to be on their board. And I think that really helped out a lot. So hopefully, we can keep doing that. And I'll try to provide you more detailed reports regarding conduit issues. And then develop additional team building and training exercise for city staff. I'm already working on that with our H R safety coordinator, Bob Gill. Got a few ideas on that. You know, I think that we can try to do more, you know, COVID did a lot of things that weren't good. I'm not sure if it did good things or not, but it changed a lot of things. And I think that one of the things that made it more difficult for employees is that we didn't do things as much as we have in the past, like just little group activities or, you know, occasionally having barbecue, like the city, the department heads throw in. We go down and, and, you know, have a barbecue at lunchtime for employees and just, you know, just say thanks. And so those kind of things, I think, are important. We're also going to work on some additional training. And then, you know, for my, and so that's something I'll work on for the employees. And then, you know, I do have a lot of oversight jobs that I work on, including the Sky High Project, you know, which is a big, big ticket item. Probably all don't know much about the airport, and I'm not sure y'all know that I am technically the airport manager. Rob's the real airport guy, and we both come on the steps with our consultants. And we have a pretty large airport project this year that we'll be talking to you more about. It's a required project. We have an F A A airport, and we'll probably give you a refresher on that. We're going to have the master plan rollout.
Hopefully next month.
Hopefully next month. So we will get that in front of the council so you can see or invite you all to it with the airport board, see what we're doing. You know, exciting stuff like crack ceiling and fixing a deficiency in the taxiway system that was created by the last F A A project. But it's a good, that's a good project, actually. You know, also, I continue to work on water augmentation, and I don't write a lot of reports about that, but I will change that a little bit more. It's incredibly nauseatingly slow. We have made progress, but it is that slow. But the city's interests are well represented. We have excellent attorneys on that. We did have them come down, I think that was maybe eighteen months ago, before COVID. We have huge water wastewater systems project to work on. And a new master plan for those. And we have a wastewater plant that will work and cost the size of the Sky High project coming up in the next five years. And we will be briefing you more on that as goes along. And, you know, there's DOL funds and basically I manage our DOL funds, not the actual accounting I remember, but all reporting all that. And we have a dollar there for Sky High. It's a million dollars and that's a very meticulous project. So I'll be continuing to work on those things. And then, an update to the city's municipal code. Well, Savina's been working with the members of the planning commission. And if you know anybody that wants to volunteer to be on the planning commission, we have vacancies. So we have two planning commissioners here. They're both great and they've got some, they're seasoned well enough that they know things pretty well. And so one of the frustrations that has with our municipal code is it was last updated in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. And the world turned a few hundred times since then. And a lot of code things have changed. And we find issues where we didn't address something. It's not in our code. You know, the idea that we don't actually have, that we don't address homeless shelters in our code, hmm, that is actually problematic from a federal standpoint. State standpoint, maybe it is too, but you have to at least address it. You know, most things cannot be entirely solved out in a community whether you want them to be or not. So we have a lot of code things that need to be fixed. You know, we have a new code officer, which I'm really excited about. He's doing a super job and the chief said that as well. But he is, he's incredibly detail oriented and he's already running into things that we know. We're like, how do we fix that? So that'll be a lot of good work. We can talk about hiring consultants to look at major code revisions. That's what most cities do. But honestly, that would be a midyear thing so you will wrap financially. We've got a proposal to issue an RFP to consultants. The council doesn't even have to select somebody. It's not inexpensive. And our code, yeah. It, it has a lot of issues. But it's not modern, things that really you're like, okay, it says this and everybody else's code these days and the governors in the last five years says something else. Our version, for instance, our adopted version of the International Residential Code, yeah, it's not even in the same decade we're in. Okay, that should have been updated. There's a two thousand twelve version that's pretty decent. Two thousand ten's bad because it has some issues. But we're at two thousand six and two thousand three. So sometimes when people call me and say, what code do you have? They just laugh. Because these have changed in code. Not, not everything, but just those simple accounts. That's just a simple administrative task. We like this, we want to exclude this. We have to coordinate that with the county as well because their building inspector does our building inspectors. Anyway, a lot of work to be done. So that's what I have for you all this evening. I think that, you know, we can work together, you know, more efficiently if we have better communication and I look forward to that. And that's all I have. If anybody has things you would add or such, you know, you can let me know or send me an email or whatever and I can re-present some of those to you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thanks.
Quick question for you. How many open seats are, or how many seats on the planning commission? How many?
Well, the minimum's three. You know, to have a full commission, we also can have two alternates. We, we used to have, it was mandatory five, but since it's so difficult that we actually revised it, we had to have three. So can the planning commission function with two? Yes, but, you know, what do you do with, I don't know. So we need at least three. And it'd be nice to have five. And the planning commission also acts as the city's board of adjustments, which we don't have a lot of board of adjustments cases, but still, having only two people is, make it pretty difficult on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest.
Thank you.
Council committee, city commission, council reports.
Well, for lots. Well, I would like to start out by saying that it seems like tonight we had a very positive meeting. And that's very refreshing. I appreciate that. Moving forward with tourism, moving forward plans to advance the city with clear goals. I love the idea of an economic developer to come in and help build some of these buildings, which will make the, which will help the tourism go easier. Welcome Manuel Lopez again. Thank you for him for stepping up to be our code officer. We've needed one and I'm happy to, we're happy to support the after prom, help provide safe activity with a supervision for our youth. I'm just really tickled that tonight we've had a very positive meeting. And that's very refreshing. So, and I love the increased communication. I'd like Forrest to make sure that we continue along that path and, and even expand that so that our communication is honest and complete and is not misleading neither to each other nor to our community. So I'm glad to have that opportunity to say that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Foster.
I think we are pointed in our direction. I'm excited about the possibilities and hopefully we can get something done this year.
Thank you.
I'd like to read what Martha said, you know, pretty much everything she said.
I'm sorry, I could have thrown you some off.
But I'm, I'm, I'm pretty excited for the city, you know. There's a resistance by all means, but we're moving forward, you know. And that's positive and that's a plus. And, you know, we're trying to get things better for our children, you know, and for our grandchildren, you know. Hopefully, hopefully, you know, things will just keep rolling in the right direction. I'm super excited with the tourism, with Adam and Ken, what they're doing. And I think you're in the library, right? Library door. So, but yeah, I'm super excited, you know, just to see things change. You know, because the city has been very stagnant for a long time, you know, and it's kind of like a pond, you know, a pond, you know, you can get sick in a pond. We need some running water, we need some flowing water. So thank you guys.
Thank you, sir. Council Johnson.
Thank you. I just had a couple of things. First, I'm glad you're still here, because I wanted to ask a question. I am also impressed with, it was kind of a tough snow job. Just kind of came out of nowhere sort of, but it got taken care of pretty quickly. The only thing I don't know, and it seems like this happens sometimes and sometimes it doesn't, the sand or gravel on the, where the snow can't be plowed up. I mean, it's just solid, basically ice. Do you still do that or?
Yes, yes. Okay. Because there's huge streets. We have two trucks that are equipped with sanders. One on storms that are above three inches are assigned to the west side. They do intersections as they go through. And then the other truck is also assigned over on the east side. So we have a sand truck on both sides of town. The core of the town, the downtown, is done with a motor grader. It actually has down pressure with hydraulic cylinders. So it can cut to the asphalt. The difference that you're seeing between what we use and what you see on the state highways is the state highways use what is called a salt slicer. So they go before a storm is actually coming in and they pre-treat the highway with a magnesium chloride, which keeps the snow from actually sticking to the pavement. We don't have that option. It will cost us roughly, I'll even give you a number, about a hundred thousand dollars each season to have enough mag chloride on hand to treat our roads with mag chloride. So that's right now, vegetarily is not an option for us. We do use a sand with a three percent salt mixture in it. So it does cut some of the things, but it will not and does not cut it anywhere near what you see on the state highways. So we are, day one is get the streets open. That's plowing from the center to the curb line. We have stopped plowing all the way to the curbs because of complaints, because we put up against the cars and we get it so people can't shovel. So we make a pass down the center and back so we can get emergency vehicles to the residents. And then we kind of let it be a free for all from there. People with their ATVs and whatever else to try to do that. And Margot out with her shovel, chugging a lot, says she should not be doing. But anyways, so we kind of do that, Gary. It is, it's a catch twenty-two. I have initiated a program for some of our stuff that I'm, still haven't got all of the logistics worked out yet. So it's more of a call basis. But after we're done with the initial snow removal process, if we have elderly or handicapped folks that need some assistance, I am sending out loaders to go clear their driveways from the snow we put in there and also theirs. We've had three requests by phone this snowstorm. We went out and took care of that. Our second priority after the initial is, of course, cleaning up the downtown. You've seen the trucks out the last day and a half hauling the snow away. So does that fully answer your question?
No, you still have another point.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's, that's way above beyond. I didn't know that y'all did that.
Snow removal's a process and it's never.
I didn't know that you went and shoveled for people that needed it. Thank you.
Well, we go out with a loader and we shovel the city sidewalks, the city owned sidewalks. But I, I want to try to address as many folks as we can. We can't go to everybody's house and clear their driveway. But there are legitimate people that have a lack of physical ability to do those things for themselves. Or the financial means to hire somebody to do those things. So we will try to take the snow that we put in out so it's at least manageable.
Okay. Thank you. The reason I was asking is I had to make several stops around town down some streets I've never even been on before.
Well, we're going to, unfortunately, just, it's going to get slickered. Okay, as, as the weather warms up during the day and then freezes at night, it's going to get slickered. So beginning next week and even over the course of the weekend, we will have the sand trucks out to more, do the intersections because the intersections will continue to get slickered.
The intersections are kind of important.
Well, and it's kind of a fault with our plow trucks, nothing that we can really do about it. But they're just basically the weight of the plow is what gets it. So as it goes on, they, once the crust is already established, the plows won't cut through it. They just ride on top, so. Sorry, that was super long-winded and I apologize.
I just had to ask about that. Everything else looked, looked fine. I was able to get my, I have to park in the street. So I was able to get out. That's all I care about. But a couple other quick things. Brought this up before and I'll, I intend to be more aggressive about it as time goes on because they are a good organization, Rio Grande Prevention Partners and subsidiary of that, which is Communities That Care. And I don't want to go into all that detail. I would, I would like to have a whole session on some of what's being done through that organization. Especially lately, some things have changed and some, some new folks have come in. It's under Dr. Backhold as the public health director, of course, who I've heard a lot of good things about. He's only been here a short time. But Juan, it's his last name, I don't remember, has taken over RGPP and the CDC leadership. And just looking forward to a lot of good things happening. And I just want to bring that up to prepare you because I'm going to be harping on that quite a bit. If you haven't been to the granite shop for lunch, I'm sorry, it's called polished bean.
Orange Bean is the restaurant.
Polished Bean, yeah. And I've been meaning to, and I finally stopped dinner today and I had, I'm, I'm, I'm a, yeah, I don't know, connoisseur is, is a little strong, but I, if, I'm from Texas, so I understand brisket and I understand barbecue. And I've never had one that was anywhere near as good as what I had today. Or as big. It was, anyhow, if you haven't been there, speaking to the public and to anybody that's, that's listening, to at least stop by. It is, it is phenomenal. If you're, you think Texas barbecue is all there is, which is what I certainly have decided, you're, you're going to be surprised. And economic developer, I love that idea as long as it's not big group from Castle Rock. And I'll leave it at that.
Amen.
Amen.
I don't really have a lot. I just appreciate what everybody does in this community to take care of everybody. I'm the staff here, love to do. So thank you to trying to, I'm sure everybody in last year, but all's on the end of us is Monty Strong. Did Karen, Motz, we want to make a motion or we just?
Motion, resist until next. This is the second one, so this one did you?
Yeah, so we adjourned this one.
Yeah, the first one's resist, the second one did you adjourn? Motion to adjourn.